All right. The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Present.
Alderman Bosley?
Present.
Thank you. Alderwoman Evans?
Present.
Alderman Page?
Present.
Alderwoman Gracia?
Present.
Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Gunther?
Here.
Alderman Stevens?
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Present.
Alderwoman Howard?
Here.
Alderwoman Green?
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Present.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel?
Present.
Alderman Todd?
Present.
Alderwoman Davis?
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Present.
Alderman Baccaro?
Present.
Alderman Orion?
Here.
Alderman Cone?
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Here.
Alderman Grass?
Here.
President Ballmer?
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderman Calder?
Here.
Twenty-four present, you have four.
All right, it's time for our prayer. I was told that Pastor John Watson from Maple Temple might be joining us. Sharita, I don't see him. Is he here yet?
He just joined.
Okay. Pastor Watson, are you here?
Yes, God bless you all.
All right, thank you, sir. Please take us and lead us in prayer.
All right. We thank God for each and every one of you, and those that are joining us, we ask you to. Just bow your heads. We read from the Holy Scripture. Be strong and of good carriage. Do not be afraid of them. For the Lord your God goes with you. He will never leave you nor forsake you. Gracious God, heavenly Father, as we stand before you today as a community, the mission seems to be longer, larger than us or our resources. Yet, you have assigned and positioned and inspired us to serve our great city. Will we ask you to dispense your grace among us that will, that our minds will be enlightened to work in unity? Allow your spirit to strengthen our hearts so that we can move with carriage forward without fear. Then all the community would experience the victory of moving our great city to a better future. Into your arms we commit. God bless you. God bless you.
All right.
God bless you.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Appreciate you taking the time to show up, and we appreciate your words always. Thank you very much, sir. Folks, before we proceed, I believe that if you would, if I may request your indulgence to make a short statement. I appear here before you today in a role I have never sought or imagined that I would hold, and I take this responsibility very, very seriously. I've had people sending congratulations, but I find there is no celebration as to this matter. The events that have thrust me into this position are deeply, deeply saddening. This board has been mortally wounded. We are in a perilous time. Who we are, what we do, and how we do it, these things are all been cast into doubt in the minds of our citizens. In the short term that I will have the honor and the privilege to lead this body, I hope to try and restore public trust in our actions. And I hope and pray you all feel the same. If ever there was a time to look past ourselves and to see the bigger picture, this is it. The integrity of this board is paramount. This is a time for healing. So I ask us to all move forward in a matter that is beneficial for our city and its citizens. Thank you very much. All right, with that, thank you, folks, very much. We will dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guest.
As always, I have my good friend Greg Meyer actually in the office with me as my special guest.
Thank you, sir. It's amazing how you spoke without me even asking you to.
Well, I knew you would.
All right, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, first, thank you, Mr. President, for those encouraging and words that I feel that they were exactly what we and the public needs to hear at this time. And I'm absolutely hundred percent in support and here to inspire, continue to serve, and keep on that. And I would like to have as my special honor guest this morning, Mrs. Dorothy Sneed and the members of CPN UA, which is Citizens United Neighborhood Association here in the twenty-sixth board, as they are celebrating twenty years of service travailing and service over here in the community. So thank you, Dorothy Sneed. Thank you to all committed members of CPN UA. You all are absolutely my honor guests this morning.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that I be the last as floor leader. I'm trying to follow in your footsteps. I'm not sure if I've got the timing right here, but would appreciate being able to wrap it up at the end.
No worries, sir. All right, Alderwoman from the nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board and the public. Thanks you for your comments this morning, I most especially do, and give you all the support and assistance that you require. But as my special guest today, I've got to give a shout out to my Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood. They are working overtime. They are determined that their neighborhood will be safe, and they're going to be a group of organized, determined residents for survival, number one, because of the safety issues, but definitely to sustain their community. So they've got cleanups planned, they're doing Juneteenth celebrations, you name it, they're doing it, and it's definitely trying to keep Dunbar School open. So I'm excited about them, and that's what this city is all about. Everybody works hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board. I wanted to, I'm glad Alderwoman Davis said that she reminded me of fifty-nine-hundred-and-six-thousand blocks of Lucille and Theckler. Those residents came together with all the city agencies and the police department and came up with a cleanup plan to make their neighborhoods safe. And so I want to give honor to them because they were determined that they were not going to be prisoners in their community. So I give them that honor and the courage that they have to fight for their community. So thank you all.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman. And Alderwoman from the fourth?
Good morning. All the members of the Board of Aldermen and Mr. Chair. I just want to commend the fourth ward with activities that are going on to celebrate Juneteenth this Saturday as well as Sunday. And I just want to thank the fourth ward for their continued activities being ever-present throughout the fourth ward.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman. And Alderwoman from the seventeenth? You're recognized.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Ballmer and members of the board. I just wanted to comment, I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but I wanted to comment on your introduction, President Ballmer. It really is, was very effective, and you know, I'm saddened by this situation, but I just wanted to acknowledge you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. All right, no other honor guests. Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just acknowledge your remarks earlier. I think that they really reflect the sentiment of many of us on the Board of Aldermen and do appreciate you putting that out there at the beginning of this meeting. I am, of course, a little bit more festive than I usually am. This is the closest I could find to a Hawaiian shirt to wear to, you know, mark this auspicious occasion with you presiding over this, you know, this body. You know, so, you know, I just want to, you know, express my gratitude for you stepping into a role that you didn't seek out and, you know, very much look forward to working with you over the coming months. Today is June tenth. It is National Egg Roll Day, so happy National Egg Roll Day to everyone. If any of you happen to see the Aldermen of the twenty-third ward rolling down a hill along I-44, please kindly pull over and remind him it's not that type of Egg Roll Day and encourage him to order out from his neighborhood Chinese restaurant. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. All right. Approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minute is dated June third, twenty-twenty-two.
Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from Friday, June third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All right, moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Second, I didn't get, I thought the Alderwoman from the fifteenth was one of them.
Fourth.
Fourth, thank you. Any discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Report to city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
It's reporter, the clerk of the Board of Aldermen. Okay, we have that. Line M, we're moving to line M seven. Is that correct, Sharita?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Petitions and communications. We'll dispense with line M seven. We go to line M eight. Board bills for perfection are on our informal calendar. Would anybody like to take any board bills or resolutions off our informal calendar? Alderwoman from the seventh? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to move Resolution Nineteen back to the HUDs Committee.
All right, Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right.
Mr. President, if I could provide some context?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, I've been in discussions with the Development Corp. about this resolution that I know was placed on the informal calendar last week, and at the request of Director Richardson, we decided to send it back to committee. It's actually a very important project. We were part of a national search and bid to win this project. And we want to send it back to committee so we can explain what, how the negotiations went, what happened, and why this is so important. So we'll have a HUDs Committee meeting in the coming weeks to discuss. Thanks, everybody.
I appreciate your clarity, and I believe we will all be doing that for the next few months. Thank you very much, sir. All right, Alderwoman from the third, you have your hand up.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I would like to, I don't know if this is the proper time yet to suspend the rules.
Yes, it is, sir.
It is. Thank you. I'd like to suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill Fifty-One.
Okay. We will take over that, so we will move to suspend the rules. Sharita, please call the roll.
We would need a second, Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Second.
We have a second from the fourth, twenty-seventh, and fourteenth. So with that, we will take a roll call.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Would you like Board Bill Fifty-One to be read?
I just, I have a quick question. Can someone point to me where it is? Is it in the first reading folder?
Do we have Fifty-One before us?
I see it now. Thank you.
It is. All right. Yes. Okay. Is it time to read this, Sharita? I'm not sure of this.
No, sir. I'll be calling the roll.
Okay, thank you very much.
You ready for me to call the roll?
Please call the roll.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans? Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Baccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans? Alderwoman Spencer?
Spencer is aye. Thanks, Sharita.
Thank you. Twenty-four ayes votes.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Fifty-One at the end of the first reading calendar.
So noted.
All right, line M eleven.
Thank you.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill Forty-One, number was not used this session. Board Bill Forty-Six sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission make an appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreements and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Forty-Seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Gracia, Alderman Todd, Alderman Page, Alderwoman Rice, Alderwoman Peel, Alderman Orion, and Alderwoman Middlebrook. The proposed bill provides for independent investigation of law enforcement misconduct and use of force incidents. The bill repeals for ordinance number six-nine-nine-eight-four as amended by ordinance number seven-zero-five-three-two and an act in lieu thereof, an ordinance that reconstitutes and provides staff support for civilian oversight board and provides coordination and staff support for the Detention Facility Oversight Board created under ordinance number seven-one-four-three-zero. The bill also established the Division of Civilian Oversight Board within the Department of Public Safety and authorizes the establishment of the Public Integrity Unit directed by the Circuit Attorney in the City of St. Louis. Board Bill Forty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance to regulate employee and employee working relationship between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service including compensation plan, terms and term, I'm sorry, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, authorization for deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number seven-one-zero-nine-nine, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section containing this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Board Bill Forty-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees of the St. Louis Board of Election Commissioners pursuant to one-one-five-point-zero-four-five and one-one-five-zero-four-nine, revised statutes of Missouri, repealing ordinance number seven-one-four-seven-nine, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. Excuse me, the provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. Board Bill Fifty, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number six-eight-seven-zero-six relating to the appointment and rates of compensation of certain employees of the License Collector of the City of St. Louis and acting in lieu thereof a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Fifty-One, introduced by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationship between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the Circuit Attorney Office, including the compensation plan, terms, conditions of employment, benefits, leave of absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number seven-zero-four-five-zero, allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this bill shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
All right, Sharita, please move Board Bill Fifty-One to public employees.
So noted.
Reference to committee of board bills.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill Forty-Six, to Public Safety, Board Bill Forty-Seven, to Public Employee, Board Bill Forty-Eight, Forty-Nine, Fifty, and Fifty-One.
All right, second reading, reporters standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of Neighborhood Development with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Sixteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Evans, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, for the forty-one-hundred block through forty-one thirty-four Dr. Martin Luther King Drive area. Board Bill Twenty-Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two for the forty-seven forty-seven Atkins Avenue and four-zero-zero-nine Delore Street area. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Twenty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and Board of Estmen and Apportionment pertaining to the process through which the City of St. Louis Airport Authority lets concessions contracts at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, amending section eight of ordinance number five-four-nine-nine-nine, approved March nineteenth, nineteen sixty-eight as codified in section eighteen-point-zero-eight-point-zero-eight-zero of the revised code, City of St. Louis, twenty-twenty anno, containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Twenty-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, amending ordinance number seven-one-two-eight-eight and the Air Service Initiative Program for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three as adopted by ordinance number seven-one-two-eight-eight, adopting and amending Air Service Initiative Program for fiscal years twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four and providing for amended financial incentives for new airlines or new air service at St. Louis Lambert International Airport, containing the severability clause and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Twenty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, making findings respecting the transfer of a maximum of thirteen million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund during fiscal year twenty-twenty-two to mitigate rates on an annual basis during the term of the airport use and lease agreement commencing July first, twenty sixteen, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, providing for the transfer of one million dollars that the City of St. Louis intends to transfer from the Airport Development Fund through the Airport Contingency Fund into the Airport Revenue Fund in order to fund the airport's Air Service Initiative Program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four, through fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, which total estimate cost may not exceed three-point-four million dollars, providing for supplemental transfers containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Thirty-Four, sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance amending ordinance number seven-one-seven-one-three-nine-zero, which ordinance amended ordinance number six-eight-nine-six-four relating to a lease agreement dated September fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, between the City of St. Louis and Fred Weber, Inc., authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the, between the City and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha LLC, containing the severability clause. Board Bill Thirty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance amending ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-one, which ordinance amended ordinance number six-seven-two-nine-eight relating to a lease agreement dated January the first, two thousand and seven, between the City of St. Louis and Fred Weber, Inc., authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the City and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha LLC, containing the severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill Twenty-Four, sponsored by Alderman Calder, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, an ordinance directing the Director's Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the twenty-two-hundred block of Indiana Avenue, the twenty-two-hundred block of Missouri Avenue, Mississippi Avenue, between Guyer Avenue and the Interstate forty-four overpass, the twenty-two-hundred block of Jewell Street, the twenty-one-hundred block of Guyer, the two-thousand block of Guyer, the two-thousand block of Ann, the twenty-one-hundred block of Allen, and the two-thousand block of Allen Avenue. Board Bill Twenty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Diane Kirby Way, pursuant to ordinance number six-eight-nine-three-seven, which shall begin at the North Curve Line, Lamai Street, at the intersection of Lamai Street and the North-South Alleyway bound by Thirteenth Street to the east and Interstate Highway fifty-five to the west, and shall run north on said alleyway to the Curve Line of Shenandoah Avenue at intersection Shenandoah Avenue and said alleyway. Board Bill Thirty-Two, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, an ordinance directing the Director's Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the fifty-eight-hundred block of Clem's Avenue between the intersections of Clem's Avenue and Goodfellow Boulevard and Clem's Avenue and Hamilton Avenue on the fifty-five-hundred block of Kate's Avenue between the intersection of Kate's Avenue and Bill Avenue and Kate's Avenue and Clara Avenue. Board Bill Thirty-Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, an ordinance directing the Director's Streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the four-thousand block of Eichelberger Street. The following board bills were reported out of HUDs with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill Thirty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Page, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, amended ordinance number seven-zero-zero-seven-four, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a second amended and restated financing agreement in connection with the financing and refinance of a certain cost associated with NGA West Facilities, Monetization Project, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Forty-Three, sponsored by Alderwoman Rice and Alderwoman Green, an ordinance pertaining to the special use districts establishing South Grand Special Use District, providing definitions and findings pertaining to the said district, further providing use and conditional use regulations for said district and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill One, as amended, sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis, and Alderman Ballmer, an ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city's bond indebtedness, establishing city tax rates and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government, containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading report of committees.
Thank you, Sharita. All right, we'll dispense with line M fourteen, line M fifteen, perfection consent. Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Make a motion that we approve the perfection consent.
I'm sorry, what?
Speaking, Mr. President, I will read the perfection consent, the board bills that are on the perfection consent, and then we can make them.
Okay, I didn't have that on my sheet here. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
All right.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Please proceed. Yes, it's backwards on here. I'm sorry.
Perfection consent calendar. Uh, perfection consent calendar, Board Bill two sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance recommended by the Planet Commission on April thirteenth, twenty twenty two to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from the F Neighborhood Commercial District to D Multiple Family Dwelling District and City Block six two four so as to include the described parcel land and City Block six two four and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill thirty one sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook and ordinance recommended by the Planet Commission on May eleven, twenty twenty two to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from the K Unrestricted District to J Industrial District and City Block three four 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 so as to include the described parcel land in City Block three four 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 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill nineteen sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis and Alderman Ballmer and ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to section nine four point six six zero revised statutes of Missouri pursuant to ordinance number six three one six eight creating the city public transit sales tax trust fund directing the treasure of the city of St. Louis to, to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the city public transit sales tax trust fund account one appropriating eleven million one hundred and seven thousand dollars from the said sales tax for the period of July first, twenty twenty two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three to the by state development agency for certain purposes and contain the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill twenty sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis and Alderman Ballmer and ordinance pertaining to, to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to section nine four point six six zero revised statutes of Missouri pursuant to ordinance number six four one 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 creating the city public transit sales tax trust fund directing the treasure of the city of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the city public transit sales tax trust fund account two appropriated eleven million one hundred and seven thousand dollars from said sales tax for the period of July first, twenty twenty two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three to the by state development agency for certain purposes and contain the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill twenty one sponsored by President Reed, Alderwoman Davis and Alderman Ballmer and ordinance authorized, I'm sorry, and ordinance appropriating the sum of twenty one million two hundred and nine thousand dollars as described in section nine four point six zero zero through nine four point six five five revet- rev- revised statutes of Missouri two thousand as amended for the period of July first, twenty twenty two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three which sum is hereby appropriated out of the transportation trust fund to the by state development agency for transportation purposes and contain the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill four sponsored by Alderwoman Rice and ordinance recommended by the Planet Commission approving the name of a new street within the approved re-subdivision in the city of St. Louis extending between Kings Highway Boulevard on on the West to Shaw Boulevard on the east to be named Shaw Avenue, the extension was created during the Kings Highway Bridge Improvement Project. Board Bill seven sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance authorized and directing the director streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on the four thousand block of West Bell Place by blocking said traffic flow at the East Curve Line of North Sarah Street at the intersection of West Bell Place and North Sarah Street. Board Bill eight sponsored by Alderman Todd and ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Academy Avenue and Raymond Avenue regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Academy Avenue and Raymond Avenue and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill nine committee sub sponsored by Alderman Todd pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four and ordinance directing the director streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the seven hundred block of Auburn Avenue, fifty one hundred block Cavity Avenue, thirty seven thirty Cook Avenue, forty one hundred block of CD Banks, forty four hundred block of Enright Avenue, thirty seven hundred block of Finney Avenue, thirty eight hundred block of Finney Avenue, the five thousand block of Minerva Avenue, the five thousand block of Ridge Avenue, forty three hundred block of Washington Avenue, five thousand block of Vernon Avenue and the fifty one hundred block of Vernon Avenue. Board Bill thirteen sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four and ordinance directing the director streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the fifty three hundred block of Arlington Avenue between the intersection of Arlington Avenue and Thackler Avenue and Ar- Arlington Avenue and Hornet Avenue and on the fifty seven hundred bu- block of Beacon Avenue between the intersection of Beacon Avenue and Praying Avenue and Beacon Avenue and Bertrand Avenue and on the forty seven hundred block of Genevieve Avenue between the intersections of Genevieve Avenue and Praying Avenue and Genevieve Avenue and Bertrand Avenue. Board Bill fifteen sponsored by Alderwoman Clark, Clark Hubbard and ordinance authorized and directing the department I'm sorry, the director streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on Maryville Avenue approximately five hundred and eighty feet south of the South Cur- Curve Line of Maple Avenue. Board Bill seventeen sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance authorized and directing the director streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the floor traffic on the Holdamont Tracks by blocking said traffic flow at the East Curve Line of Hamilton Avenue and at the intersection of Holdamont Tracks and Hamilton Avenue and at the West Curve Line of Goodfellow Boulevard at the intersection of Holdamont Tracks and Goodfellow Boulevard, that's the extent of perfection consent calendar.
All right, thank you very much, uh, before we proceed Oliver from twenty third, you have your hand up, let's.
Yes, uh, the, I mean, I didn't move to take it off consent, I'm, I'm gonna have to vote uh, abstain from this, I don't have any problems, but my nephew's a mechanic for by state.
So are you talking about a bill? Are you talking about a bill on refreshing, you can move it now.
On the perfection, on the perfection consent.
You can move it now if you like, sir, is there a board?
No, I'll just, I'll just abstain, I'm sure everything will be fine, I'll abstain.
Perfection consent, okay, we'll have to take a roll call then, sir.
Okay, okay, yeah, I mean, I would hate to pull something, just one thing, we would, it would have to be the by state bill that we would have to pull.
We can just do a roll call for the entire.
Yeah. Okay, and, and just so everybody understands why I'm abstaining, it's because of power, I'm unsure, but I do, nephew that's a mechanic.
All right, at this point, Oliver from the twenty fifth, you're recognized for approval of other perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we, uh, pass the perfection consent calendar.
There's been a second. All right, uh, you have the second. We have a request for roll call, Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Abstain.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Twenty four I votes and one abstain.
Thank you, Sharita, uh, and if we could, please wait to be recognized before we speak, I would appreciate that. We'll move to line item sixteen, board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Thank you. Line item seventeen, third reading consent calendar.
Board Bill eighteen committee sub.
All right, thanks very much, uh, Alderman from the twenty fifth, you're recognizing a motion for the third reading consent calendar.
I make a motion that we pass the third reading consent calendar.
Second, second by Oliver from the fourteenth. Okay, and we will, please, Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye, aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. I'm sorry, Alderwoman Switzer, I didn't move, thank you.
Thanks.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Appeal.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Twenty five I votes.
Thank you very much. By your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Oliver from the twenty, of twenty fifth, third read and finally pass your aforementioned board bills. Uh, line item eighteen, third reading, reporter McGrossman, final passage.
Board Bill eighteen committee sub.
All right, all of the business being suspended, the president will now in open session, fix the signature here too, to the end that these may become law. Okay, more bill eighteen committee substitute, we'll spend with line item nineteen. Uh, line item twenty, first reading of resolutions.
Resolution forty three sponsored by Alderman Stevens calling for a moratorium, moratorium on tax increment financing and tax abatement board bills for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty three legislative session.
Oliver from the twelfth, you're recognized for the first reading of resolution forty three.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and dear colleagues at the board, um, so resolution forty three, uh, is of course, in response to the recent federal indictments, um, and it does call for a moratorium, however, I do not want this to be a resolution that one, looks exactly as it currently stands coming out of committee and two, goes to committee only to be immediately sent back, whether they do pass or do not pass, uh, I've requested that it be sent to.
Point of order.
Uh, state your point of order, please.
Mr. President, uh, the sponsor can't just be speaking here, he either needs to ask for, request unanimous consent, refer the resolution to ask unanimous consent, refer the resolution to committee or have it read.
Thank you, Oliver, I appreciate that.
I apologize.
Oliver from the twelve, Oliver from the twelfth, you have two choices, request unanimous consent or, or refer this to a committee, there's no discussion at this point.
That is correct, and I apologize, uh, I've only had one cup of coffee, uh, ergo, thank you, I would like to have it referred to intergovernmental affairs committee for a series of hearings and not just one.
All right, thank you very much, Sharita, please make note of that, I have two hands up, Oliver from the seventh, you're up first.
Um, yeah, I will, Oliver from the twelfth yield for questions.
Okay, we, we, we still haven't had a second, I apologize, there's no second on that motion to go to intergovernmental affairs. So before we take any discussion, is there a second to move this to, uh, intergovernmental affairs?
I'll second that.
So it's been moved the second by the Oliver from the twenty third. At this point, uh, do we now get to all in favor, we?
Excuse me, we get to discuss the, uh, motion, which I want to discuss.
We, okay, we had a motion, we had a second.
And I want to discuss.
We were with the Oliver from the seventh, before that, I apologize, work with me here, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Oliver from the seventh, please proceed, you were up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I, I guess, if they all are from the twelfth would yield for questions.
Oliver from the twelfth, will you yield for questions to the Oliver from the seventh?
I will yield for questions, yes.
Um, why are you sending us to intergovernmental affairs and not one of our committees that deals with development related issues?
Yes, I appreciate that question, Alderman of the seventh, because it is, it is something that I debated, uh, but not only myself, but a few of our colleagues, um. The point of it is not to look at TIFs and tax abatements necessarily, uh, as they stand for developmental purposes, so say pending board bills or pending projects that utilize them for economic, as an economic tool, but rather to look at how we as a legislative body approach these board bills which can easily, easily exceed two hundred pages. So because it would require, uh, and because it is a, a process that is inherently intergovernmental in the sense of the legislative branch working with the executive branch, and I understand that the older woman of the first disagrees, but I appreciate her hearing me out, um. I essentially wanted to either go to intergovernmental affairs or even rules, because it's not about TIFs and tax abatements so much as it's about our approach to them and our vetting of these board bills.
Okay, I don't stand that, but, um, I, I'm gonna oppose your motion, I don't think this should be going to your government affairs, if you want to send it to HUDs or rules or Ways and, some committee that deals with development, I think that's much more appropriate, uh, more importantly, I think your resolution is extremely short sighted, um, you know, we've got, we've got pending low income housing tax credit program or, uh.
Point of order, point of order.
Point of order, point of order, you're recognized.
Alderman from the seventh, you were right to say you opposed your motion, but when you get into the, what is the resolution is about, that's out of order, okay? But I'm gonna agree with you about, I'm opposing the resolution too.
I'd just like to note, the Oliver of the first is agreeing with me, so I'll leave it at that. I'm done, thank you, Chairman, or President.
All right, Oliver from the fir-, Oliver from the first, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm gonna oppose this, uh, motion to send it to, uh, intergovernmental affairs. Uh, the reason we have standing committees is they don't just, uh, deal with board bills, they deal with resolutions and things that are adjacent to them. And so in this case, that is, we have a standing, two standing committees that could, uh, deal with this and standing committees take priority over somebody trying to send something to something that does not have anything to do with it and the two committees should be HUD and or, uh, uh, what's the development, whatever the.
Neighborhood development.
Development, thank you, and the chair from neighborhood development lets me know, okay, so they should go to one of the other, it should not be going to even rules or intergovernmental affairs, and I'm gonna oppose and I would ask everybody else to oppose it and then have it sent it to one of the standing committees, thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman, uh, Oliver from the twenty fourth, you have your hand up. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, I just wanna echo the sentiment of some of my colleagues, I think that HUDs is probably the appropriate place for this uh, resolution, uh, that's where the, the people are who are making these decisions, uh, in committee. I think that's probably the appropriate place, uh, when we're looking at the, uh, how we're doing this as a whole, uh, HUDs is the committee that's dealing with most of the big dollar uh, abatements and incentivizations, and I think that's probably the appropriate committee to hear this, thank you. Thank you, sir, Oliver from the twenty fifth, you have your hand up, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would add, uh, Ways and Means also does have a number of board bills that get assigned to it from time to time regarding um, TIF and other incentives as well, so, you know, i- if there's a third committee that it could go to, I would add Ways and Means to that possibility as well.
All right, sir, thank you, what I will do, uh, Oliver from the twenty third, uh, and twenty, and the twelfth, uh, Oliver the twelfth, I would ask if you're willing to amend your motion, if you are, we'll have the Oliver from the twenty third withdraw his second and, uh, I would recommend that we probably send this to HUDs, uh, would you, are you willing to amend your motion?
Uh, I will, you beat me to it, um, but would I be within the rules to, to address these concerns and to rebut them or?
I don't know that this is the place for that, we're merely sending this to a committee at this time, uh, so Oliver from the twenty third, will you withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
The second is withdrawn, Alderman Stevens, would you like to amend your motion?
Uh, I will, in the spirit of compromise, I will amend my motion to refer resolution forty three to the HUDs committee, and if not HUDs, then Ways and Means.
We will go with HUDs and, uh, do we have a second on that?
I'll, I'll second.
There's a second from the twenty third. The second from twenty-third, I didn't catch the other one. At that point, Sharita, please make note of that, and send resolution forty-three to HUDs. I apologize, we need a vote. I apologize. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, we'll send forty-three to HUDs.
Thank you very much. A first reading of resolutions.
All right, second reading of resolutions.
Resolution thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Switzer, Alderman Peel, Alderman Howard, and Alderman Evans, supporting a study for implementing an emergency vehicle traffic signal preemption system.
All right, Alderman Bacaro, you're recognized on resolution thirty-three.
So, we, this came out of, out of committee with everyone. Well, I don't, okay, I didn't think I needed to make a motion. I make a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
That we adapt the resolution.
We can discuss.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Please proceed, Alderman.
Okay, so what this does, it will allow, like Elliot Davis did a story and showed where this is going on in certain communities, and based off of the resolution we're doing, the county also is doing a similar resolution. What this does is, it allows if a fire truck, an ambulance, or a police car, and in the case of possibly, if they're pursuing someone, it will turn the lights green in the direction they're going, and red in the opposite directions. You don't think much about it, but those four people that got killed were going through a green light when they got hit by someone being chased and, and got killed. And that's happened a couple times. And if you've ever been at a stoplight, and all the traffic is at a red light, and ambulance is blown its horn behind you, and you don't know what to do, the car next to you isn't moving over, what this does is it, it just turns the lights green and lets, lets the traffic flow, and hopefully people get out of the way. It stops the traffic going the other direction. And it's, it's, it's a pretty simple thing, and it's a study. Hopefully, they'll come back with what it would cost. It's all done now on the, on, over the cloud. You know, so it's not a real costly thing, but this is asking for the, them to do a study to see if it's possible to do, and I believe it is based off of the committee. But the cost and how we could go about putting this in place. And I, I am open to any questions, Mr. President.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Alderman from the seventh, you have your hand up. Or is that?
Sorry, no questions.
All right, thank you, sir. I don't see any other hands. No further discussion.
If anybody else wants to be honest as a co-sponsor, it's certainly welcome. I think the more of us, it just says that, you know.
All right, sir. Well, we, we, discussion is closed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? By your vote, we have adopted resolution thirty-three. Line item twenty-two, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, public employees will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. Jones, Tuesday, June fourteenth, full board meeting at nine AM via webinar.
Is it nine AM or ten AM?
I'm sorry, it is ten AM.
Thank you, I could use that extra hour.
Wednesday, June fifteenth, Streets will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Intergovernmental Affairs will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Thursday, June sixteenth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, thank you very much, Sharita. Line M twenty-four, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognizing the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. All Aldermen are present today.
All right, wonderful.
I didn't have to use that. I was not looking forward to that particular motion.
All right, line M twenty-five. We will, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, we entertain the motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I forgot we, the.
Oh, announcements.
I apologize.
Oh, no, just for announcements, if there were other Alders that had announcements.
Oh, I, my hands came up later. I apologize. We will, if you indulge me, we'll go to announcements. I have Alderman Grass up first on my lineup right now.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I appreciate that, Alderman Rice, because I didn't really know of that. But just a couple quick announcements that's going on in the neighborhood this weekend, and then in a couple weeks. This weekend, there is a Juneteenth celebration in the Loop. There's going to be a ribbon cutting ceremony at twelve oh seven Urban E. It's a black-owned vegan restaurant in the Loop at eleven o'clock. And then Saturday night is the big Central West End cocktail party. They close down Euclid. It's a lot of fun. I'll probably be on the stage around like seven thirty or so, if anyone wants to come down, please do. And then also, I was going to say, on June twenty-second, we're going to have a meeting about King's Highway traffic calming. I've been talking to Alderman Todd and Hubbard and Peel about that. It's going to be at the Link Auditorium. Doors open at five thirty, presentation starts at six, but there'll be a posting and stuff for that.
All right, thank you very much. Next on our hit parade is Alderman from the eighth. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We got to be quicker with the hands under your leadership here. We will work on that. I wanted to announce, last weekend, there was the Wear Orange for, to end gun violence rally that happened in Keener Plaza, and that was a great turnout. There is also a March For Our Lives STL event that's happening tomorrow at eleven AM, kicking off in Keener Plaza. And the March For Our Lives group are the students who came together after the shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida. And, and so this is a youth-led event that is taking place tomorrow. And I did also want to note in our Intergovernmental Affairs hearing on Wednesday, we're going to do a preliminary hearing on the Charter Commission Bill. We're not taking public testimony at this time, because I, I imagine that we will need another hearing at least. I want, this is a, a proposal for a long-term plan for the city of St. Louis, and so I want to get as much input as possible, but have a preliminary hearing so the committee can get to work on that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman. We have Alderman from the first, you're next.
Sorry, Mr. President, I was the last one, so I don't want to jump in front of it.
On my screen, they pop you up in.
But I'm the last one, okay?
We'll take you last then. First will be last. Okay, at that, we had Alderman Todd from the eighteen, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you both of Alders. This coming Saturday, I'm calling for a ward-wide cleanup in the eighteenth ward. But there are specific organizations that have planned, have plans and organized this Saturday, tomorrow at ten AM, the Gateway to one PM, the Gateway Green, the Covenant Blue Group, which is in the eighteenth ward, St. Alfonso Rock Church will be sponsoring the cleanup, which refreshments will be served after the cleanup at the Rock Grill to glory. And then cleanup starts on Cook Avenue and Grand Avenue. And it starts at ten AM, and it will go on until one PM. Then the Fountain Point Lewis Place Committee, Development Current Stern Committee, and the Lewis Place Historical Preservation Committee will start cleaning up at nine thirty AM to twelve PM this Saturday, tomorrow. And this, uh, uh, safety director, Mr. Richard Ellis, you can call him if you have questions. His telephone number is area code three one four seven six six three one six seven. That's three one four seven six six three one six seven. Please clean in front of your house and back, and behind your part of half of the alley. Thank you very much.
All right, Alderman, thank you very much. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This Saturday, tomorrow, SLMPD, fifth district is having their annual spring fest. It's at Sherman Park, right behind our beloved Woe Community Center at fifteen fifteen North King's Highway, from eleven thirty to two. It's a completely free event, and it's a lot of fun for the children and families. Again, that's tomorrow, from eleven thirty to two, behind Woe. And then the Delmar Loop, that's my colleague from the twenty-eighth, Alderman Grass mentioned, the Delmar Loop, East Loop, they're having their Juneteenth event. This is a, a great event. This year, we getting ready to pick it back up. And I'm excited about that. It opens with a drum call at noon at the corner of Hamilton and Delmar, which is always a good time. And then, again, a free event with all kind of things culminating in a four PM performance of Spirit of Angela. And if you've never seen Spirit of Angela, it's the truth, it's the truth. But that'll be, again, at the corner of Hamilton and Delmar. And then Target St. Louis is a film, a documentary by Damon D. Smith. Target St. Louis, volume one, is the story of how black people were disproportionately affected by chemical testing here in the city of St. Louis down in Apulido, part of our village area. And so, it'll be this Saturday, six PM, at Flue Auditorium, the Cook Auditorium on Flue Campus, thirty-six eighty-four Lindell Avenue. Again, this, again, is a free event, and it's a screening of Target St. Louis, volume one, by our very own film director, Damon D. Smith. So, clearly, a lot of things going on in St. Louis Saturday, and there's more to come, but make sure you get out and enjoy it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman. Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to announce that myself, along with Alderman from the twenty-seventh, Alderman Pam Boye, will be holding a joint meeting discussing traffic calming on Riverview tomorrow at Nance Elementary at ten AM. Mo that will be there to answer questions, so I'm urging all residents to please come out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This Saturday, the eighteenth, there will be a bike ride. I know, I hope to see all of you guys with your bikes. They're going to start at Tandy, and they're going to ride downtown and back. That starts at eight o'clock. And also, on the nineteenth, we will have a Juneteenth activity going on. There will be vendors, and that's at Sumner High School. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman. We'll go to the Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This Saturday, and for a number of locations, the Urban League will be bringing in another boost to our economy, and it's called grocery and gas. And so, they'll be providing free food, free gasoline cards. They'll also have some seminars at about six different locations to help people with small businesses, whether or not they need their mortgage paid, and a number of other things, entrepreneurial opportunities to get funding to start new businesses. I have sent it out to probably fifty different neighborhood entities and/or organizations, and I know most of my colleagues have received it and are sharing it as well. But for the general public, it's on the Urban League website, and it's also knowing that they have the Sears Building now, so most of the activities will be at the Sears Building or at the Ferguson location on West Florence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board. I wanted to let my colleagues know about the Mackland Market, which happens the second Saturday of the month during the spring, summer, and fall months. That's tomorrow, starting at ten AM, running till two. There'll be dozens of local makers, live music, local food and drinks. It's also partly hosted by Wagamama, so you can bring your dogs, and there's a little dog play area as well. So, if anyone's able to stop by, it's at the fifty-eight hundred block of Mackland. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Alderman from the third, you have your hand up. I do, thank you. We are having our annual third ward camping in the park event coming up next weekend on the eighteenth. There also will be a parade coming down Natural Bridge, and also another event happening on the nineteenth there at Fairgrounds Park. So, for those parents out there who are watching, who have children, and are looking for something for them to do over the next weekend, especially if you have a father who has a young child in between the age of sixteen and fourteen, you can come on out to High Park. Everything is free. You get a free tent. You get a sleeping bag, and we teach the kids how to fish in the morning time, so it's a really nice event. So, it's our annual third ward camping in High Park. All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, and last but not least, Alderman from the first, you're up.
When you go last, sometimes people take the announcements. So, somebody else made the announcement, so I'm good. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, man. Also, if you're, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, sorry, a little delayed there with the hand raising. I do want to also announce that in Dutchtown, we'll be having a Father's Day and Juneteenth kickball tournament at Sunday, June nineteenth, eleven AM to four PM in Marquette Park. You can register for that on, online at dutchtownstl.org. Thanks.
All right, thank you. There's a lot of announcements. Next week, we're going to, we'll do them alphabetically by height, as far as how we proceed with announcements. And also, this Sunday, June twelfth, is the annual Soapbox Derby by the J.C.'s. And the tenth ward is drawing down Mackland Avenue. They're starting at Botanical up near Shaw School and running down to Mount, was it, Daggett Avenue. So, come by at noon, the police chief and fire chief will be racing each other. I'm not sure if chief, a retiring chief will be showing up or the new chief, so we'll see what happens. There will be a car show, bands, music, and events such as that, that starts around nine in the morning, but the police chief and fire chief at noon. At this point, I believe, we will go to line M twenty-five, but before we do, thank you all for my first meeting in this, this role. I appreciate all the help, and we'll appreciate all the help we can give each other over the next few months. Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn. Please unmute.
I thought I had unmuted myself. Thank you, Mr. President. I make the motion that we adjourn to Tuesday, June fourteenth at ten AM via webinar.
Second.
Okay, we have a second at the Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Fourth.
Fourth, I apologize. Okay, all in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
That's Shane's job. He's always opposed. What's going on?
Make the motion.
I know.